East Bank Stadium documents and exhibits. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Withers. Think I saw you here? Good morning. Thank you for being here. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes, and we don't have a form, so we're going to move that to a later time. If that's okay? This morning, we have a lot to cover. We'll pick up where we stopped on March 8th and try to get through the stadium lease agreement, the non-relocation agreement, and team guarantee, intellectual property agreement, ground lease, and site coordination agreement. That's a mouthful. So it's going to be a full morning. So I want to be as respectful as possible of your time. So we're going to go ahead and get started. We have Deputy Mayor Sam Wilcox, Finance Director Kelly Flannery, Deputy Law Director Tom Cross, and Jeff Oldham with Bassberry and Sims as our Metro Bond Council. I'll remind the authority, please utilize this time in the way that works best for you. Do not hold questions, and feel free to ask them in your timely manner. We have a three-hour time slot for this morning's meeting, so we will have a break this morning. So with that, there are no objections. I'll turn it over to the administration.
I'd like to also introduce a couple of other people at the table that were not with us last time but have been invaluable to getting the documents prepared that you have in front of you. Is it Frank Jones and Dennis Bram from the law firm of Greenberg-Trowick? They work out of their Houston office and together have worked on practically every major sports stadium deal over the last 15 or 20 years. Tremendous experience and have brought a lot to us. And this is going to work about as it did in our last work session where Jeff leads us through it. But you're welcome to ask questions of any of us, including Sam and Kelly. Bye.
Welcome, and thank you for being here. Hey, Jeff.
Do we have these slides loaded up? Do you have them in front of you? Yep. There we go. So I guess, so we're going to start, as the chair said, we're going to start with stadium lease agreement. I think that's Exhibit B in your board book. And we'll do, as Tom said, we'll just do what we did last time. Please stop and ask questions. I'm going to go. Charity covered that slide of what we're going to talk about. I thought, just a quick reminder, y'all saw this the last time. Nothing new here, but just a reminder of the structure. You're sort of at the top of the stadium here. We're not talking about the stadium lease. Your tenant is going to be Statco Tennessee Stadium LLC. And then there will be two subleases, one to the team, one to TSU. So just reorient everybody there. So then I thought, let's just do a little super-high-level comparison to the current lease. I just think it's helpful just to sort of get all this in context, sometimes to the current lease, sometimes to the Geotis lease, which is the one you're most familiar with. It's most recent. So let's just compare super-high level. Right to stadium revenues under the current lease, those go to Statco. Under the proposed lease, they go to Statco. So no change there. Responsibility for operating expenses. You know this, under the current lease, that's Statco's responsibility. That will be Statco's responsibility under the proposed lease. Capital expenses. Under the current lease, there are a handful of revenue streams that have been earmarked for capital expenses. And it's stadium sales tax, which is sort of a new thing under the statute since 2021. Ticket taxes, you're familiar with. The water and sewer pilot. The Metro General Fund makes a $1 million annual payment. The balance of capital expense responsibility then rests with the authority. Y'all are familiar with that. The New Deal inverts that. And so there are designated revenue streams, and we'll talk about those. And then the team is then the backstop, whereas you are now. Another big difference, these last two rows are the big differences. Under the current lease, everything around this building is surface parking and is encumbered by the lease for surface parking. And we're going to get to this here later today. Under the new lease, the site is the building itself and a 100-foot security buffer. The campus is separate and addressed, handled in the site coordination agreement, not the lease. So those are the two big changes. So then with that, let's just sort of go through. And again, we'll go more quickly on some of these sections because, in my mind, they're pretty straightforward. And then just sit with some more of the sections that I think warrant more attention. But if at any point along the way you want to stop, let's stop, ask questions. So Articles 2 and 3, description of the premises. I just sort of described it. It is, right now, your current lease, it's this whole campus. The new lease, the premises are just the building and that 100-foot buffer, just that direction. The term is 30 years from opening. And as you've seen since the term sheet days, Article 3 contemplates rent payable by the team in an amount equal to $3 per patron of non-NFL events. So that's what's going on in Articles 2 and 3 of the stadium lease.
Jeff, we got to ask some clarification on the rent. That's $3. Is that $3 fee pegged to any inflationary index or CPI?
No.
Over a 30-year period of time, it's not going to be the same value?
It's not. It's just like a, it's not a ticket tax, but in its calculation, it's just a per-patron, a per-patron charge.
Is this the one that is under the purview of the NFL Players Agreement also? Is that why you didn't have any flexibility there?
No, it was just a sort of a negotiated provision.
Thank you.
So Article 4, let's spend a little more time here. This is the section of the lease that deals with stadium operating expenses. Let me skip to that slide. So as a starting point, what is the requirement? Statco's requirement is to fund all operating expenses necessary to maintain the stadium to the operating standard. And the operating standard, if you look in the definitions, is sort of like the existing lease. Keep it in both good condition and in a manner consistent with comparable facilities. Comparable facilities are recent vintage NFL stadiums, not including SoFi.
I'm sorry. How far back does that go as far as year, just in general? I think I saw somewhere that that was Hard Rock or...
So yes, so the existing lease, I think, and you, Tom, correct me if I go astray here. It had sort of like a 10-year window. I'm sort of winging it here, but I think like a 10-year window that captured facilities around that period. Hard Rock was one of them. In this document, I think comparable facilities is defined a little more, well, I think that's more specifically in the three stadiums that it cites are the three most recently constructed ones. Las Vegas, Atlanta, and US Bank in Minneapolis. Yeah. And they are all, I guess, sort of, I guess, in a handy sort of way. They're all domed, I guess. Atlanta's retractable, but they're otherwise dome facilities.
Okay.
Yep. So sticking to Article 4 here, well, that's, those are the main things. There is a requirement that, you know, you think about sort of the two big jobs, two of the big jobs of running a building are the management itself and the concessionaire. Article 4 requires them to engage or outsource to qualified folks those responsibilities. So that's the requirement. Let's talk about sort of where do the funds come for that? One obviously is, it's an obligation of Statco, and so Statco funds would be a funding source. You're going to see, we're going to get to this in a bit. There's a lot of discussion about excess revenues, dollars that are available after debt service on the bonds have been paid, and they go to different places. We'll talk about that in a minute. One of the places they go is excess revenues equal to ticket tax and rent are deposited into a maintenance and repairs fund.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Sure.
Did you just skip over Article 4?
We were, I'm on page 6, and we're still in, we're sort of still in Article 4, but we're really talking about its funding.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm looking at the book, at the manual that I have here.
Yeah, so yeah, stadium lease, yeah, Article 4.
Operating expenses, maintenance and operation.
That's right.
Okay. Because I have questions. Go ahead.
Well, okay, so let me finish this thought, and then I want to get to that. So there is a, so excess revenues equals ticket tax and rent go into a maintenance and repairs fund. There are lots of funds in here. Not a lot, but some. Maintenance and repairs fund. That fund is held by you, Metro Finance actually, held by you and able to be requisitioned by the team to pay operating expenses that are tied to the repair and maintenance of the building. And so this is seed money, if you want to call it, whatever you want to call it. It is money that flows out of the model that is available to pay operating expenses. So I want to make sure I get to your question.
No. My question has to do with, I'm looking at the, there's a statement here, "if not a capital expense." It talks about stadium company, Statco?
Uh huh.
If I'm missing that right. Being responsible for maintaining, repair, replacement, those kinds of things.
That's right.
If not a capital expense.
Right.
Explain that.
Yeah, so just if you want to think about it, you divide the world up, the stadium world, into two categories of expenses. Operating expenses and capital expenses. The lease sticks Statco with both of those, but it does it in two sections, and it speaks about them differently. So there is one section, Article 4, which is talking about operating expenses. And for a variety of reasons, it's important to really distinguish between an operating expense and a capital expense. So we try to talk about them very separately, but they are both. Responsibility is allocated to Statco for both, but it's done separately, trying to just be clear.
Just wanted to be certain because I thought maybe the authority might be saddled with replacing escalators, elevators.
Yeah. And so, and that's a good question. So Article 4 of the stadium lease is the shifting, in the same way that it's shifted now, shifting of operating expenses to be a Statco responsibility. When we get to Article 6, Article 6 will speak to capital expenses and how that shift works. That part is new. You know, under the current lease, that's the authority's responsibility. And so 6, you're going to see that flipped on its head.
Yeah. In a situation where there needs to be a backstop for capital expenses, is the city or the authority on the hook at the end of that line?
No.
No, in neither bucket?
In neither bucket, yeah. And you'll see, when we get to Article 6 and the capital expense, it's, there's some real process around what is a capital, you know, what is a capital expense? What's required to be done? And how is the funding required to be provided? And it's, if we sit with any section of the stadium lease, that's the one we ought to sit with the most.
Then I'll defer my question.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions about operating expenses? This is great. So Article 5, I don't even know what's in Article 5. I was so unimpressed with it that I didn't even mention it. Delinquent payments and handling charges. Now I know why I left it out. All right. So let's, so we're now, we're right on to the next section. So these questions, perfect segue. Article 6, this is, you know, this is where the action is and the real difference from the current lease. But you're going to, I think, hopefully see some familiarities with other agreements. So Section 6.1 allocates the responsibility for both construction, administration, funding, capital expenses to Statco. And that's got to be consistent with the capital repair standard, which, no surprise, sounds a lot like the operating standard, which is both good condition and consistent with comparable facilities. That's what's going on there. And so I said familiarity. Let's talk, this is one where we can like do a comparison to the Geotis Park lease. And you've, that's the one you've most recently signed. I don't think, I think the Capital Asset Management Plan and that deal doesn't start with year seven, so I don't think they've actually had one yet. So you've not operated yet, had an occasion to do this, but this is what's in the Geotis Park lease. So if you look at the first row, both leases require a capital asset management plan, and we're going to refer to that as a camp because it's just easier. So there's a camp required by both leases. In the Geotis Park lease, the first camp is due in year seven, I believe, and then it's every other year after that. We'll talk about what the camp is and who does it. In this lease, it's every third year, starting with year three. And the camp basically is, is an independent third party comes in and says, what's going on with the building? What needs to be, what needs to happen? So in both leases, there is the concept of a project manager. That is that independent third party brought in to do the review and the recommendation for you. In both leases, it's, that entity is engaged the same way. They are hired by and paid for by Statco, but subject to your approval. So that's an important right you have. You've got to be satisfied with this person, entity, that's coming in. And that entity's going to have sort of two characteristics. An engineering characteristic, you know, being able to look at a building and go, what needs to be done to this building? But also a facilities assessment consultant type because there is a comparable facilities requirement. And so to know what really has to be done, you got to not only walk this building, but you got to know what's going on, you know, in comparable facilities.
So would the camp then be our assurance that not only is the stadium continuously being upgraded to be of comparable ilk of the rest of the league, but also this is our check on deferred maintenance, right? This is where we then get the assurance that something that should be happening is happening.
That's exactly right. Yeah. So you're getting, every three years, you're getting a look forward and a look back.
And that's in the mission statement of the camp as defined here.
That's right. Yeah. And so, you know, it's worth it. I mean, this is, you know, Section 6.2A. Maybe we've got to spend just a little time, what goes in the camp? And so this is something you're getting every three years. You know, a general summary of the condition of the building and a description of the strategies that need to be implemented to keep the building going. You know, summary of routine and preventative maintenance requirements, a general summary of sort of the capital repairs work that's going to need to be done during the next 10 years, an assessment report, which, you know, this is, y'all have, y'all have commissioned those from time to time. You know, every three years, you're going to have a sort of a living, breathing assessment report. A summary of the improvements in comparable facilities so that you know what's going on, you know, with those. And so it's, and then sort of the last, the next to last thing, identification of all work necessary, you know, to comply with capital repairs standard. So yes, that's a long-winded answer to your question. That really is the heart of your oversight, your oversight piece of this is that camp. And that's happened every three years.
Thank you.
So...
And paid for.
Yeah.
And paid for by Statco.
Yeah. And that camp is paid for by Statco. That's exactly right. You're going to see, so the camp sort of tells you, okay, sort of, look back, look forward. Here's what needs to be going on. That then transitions into an annual budget that is, that is sort of the same concept as in both the Geotis lease and then the stadium lease. But the ultimate funding responsibility at Geotis is yours. And so in this case, that's been shifted to the team. And so the responsibility for preparing the budget, instead of you preparing it and then sending it to Metro Finance, who sort of then is sort of looking at it from a budget perspective. In this case, it's Statco, the person responsible for complying with the camp requirements, producing that budget and providing it to you. Ultimate responsibility for capital expenses, I've sort of alluded to it, under Geotis, it's you. Under the stadium lease, it's Statco. There's designated funding under both structures. In Geotis, you'll remember that a portion of ticket tax revenues are siphoned off and put in a capital repairs fund. And so that's the primary funding source.
How long does that last? The excess funds, how long does that go on?
At Geotis Park, it goes on for the life of the lease.
Okay. And what's planned for the new stadium?
So the plan for the new stadium is, you know, I talked about excess revenues, and we'll get into more detail here. After the payment of debt service, money goes into a handful of places. One place where it goes is the Capital Repairs Reserve Fund. And so there is a, there is, could be, depending on what revenues do. It's all dependent on how revenues come in. There could be, and we expect there will be, funding every year into a Capital Repairs Reserve Fund, which will be for Statco what the ticket tax revenues are for you, for Geotis Park. Head start, seed money, funding, whatever you want to call it, for capital repairs, and that will run the life of the lease.
If there's a shortfall in that capital repaired budget and something is required to be addressed, that lands on Statco?
That's right. And so you're good at asking questions. It's segue to the next slide. So here's a little flow chart of how it works. So you're starting on the left. Every third year, this project manager that's been hired is going to come to you with the camp. How's it going? What needs to be done? Here's a list of repairs and improvements. That's every third year. Every year then, Statco will develop a capital budget for a particular year. And so, back to the camp a minute. The camp only talks about capital expenses that are required by the lease. So, you know, there's a repair that needs to be made because something is broken. The thing, you know, the stadium's not in good condition. There's an improvement that needs to be made in order to keep this building in line with comparable facilities. The lease requires it. That's what the camp addresses. There could be, though, improvements that Statco just not required but wants. And so you get the camp required improvements coming in, feed into that, improvements that Statco would like to do. That all feeds then into an annual capital budget. Here's what we expect to spend this year. Here's the money we're going to need for this year. And that budget, then, that budget, and we'll talk a minute about how that gets funded. Once that budget's done, then Statco's on their way with the construction and administration of those budgeted items. So that's how, from camp to budget, to actually hammers and nails, that's how capital expenses work.
I have a question with reference to project manager. I'm looking at Article 6.2B.
Right.
It indicates here that an independent consultant firm of qualified engineers licensed in the state of Tennessee, et cetera. The word architect, was that left out on purpose?
Yeah, I don't think. Tom, I'll let you.
No. Most of the firms that have expertise in doing this are engineering firms, but if there were an architectural firm that was qualified and recommended, that would be fine.
I was only asking if you should indicate that you would have qualified architects also in that. That was the only thing. Architects are designing it. Then I'm assuming that architects would participate in the condition assessments.
They might participate in the condition assessment, and depending on the type of capital improvement that you're talking about, particularly the kind that the team desires, there almost certainly is going to have to be some architectural involvement in that.
So let's go to the next slide. We've sort of, I think we've sort of hit on this. How does the camp work? Who prepares it? We've hit on 6.3. This is now sort of, these are sort of the words, you know, the words that align with that chart that we just looked at. Statco has the right under Section 6.3 to propose optional capital improvements. We'll talk a little bit about your oversight of that here in a minute. And then there is, and then there is the budget that we talked about on an annual basis. So let's talk about funding for a minute. In the same way we talked about funding for operating expenses, it's similar. So it's Statco's ultimate responsibility, just like operating expenses. You'll see in Section 6.5, there is the concept of a Capital Repairs Reserve Fund. And this is sort of an important fund because it's the mechanism that ensures sufficient funding of the capital budget. You'll see how that works in a minute. So basically, each year, well, let me tell you about one other funding source. Just like we talked about excess revenues, there being a funding source for the Maintenance Repairs Fund, there is also a funding source if excess revenues are available for this Capital Repairs Reserve Fund. And that's an annual allocation of a portion of excess revenues into this fund. So now, if you think about it, you got a budget per year. That's the demand, the capital expense demand. You're going to have, you could have funding under Section 9.7 of excess revenues into a Capital Repairs Reserve Fund. So at that point, you know, what's my budget this year? What's the funding source from excess revenues? The team is required on an annual basis to cover that gap. And so you've got, you know, it's important, I think, jump in, any of them, jump in if I go astray, but it's important to assign the responsibility just conceptually and say, it's yours. It's even better than to say, okay, now we have a mechanism on a year-to-year basis to say, okay, not only have we assigned the responsibility, but we have a way to make you bring money to the table, you know, to make sure that that's being done. So that's what's going on through this cap, in Article 6, through this Capital Repairs Reserve Fund.
I think the only thing I might add is to also strengthen that argument of forcing them to the table, it also is a default under this lease if they don't do it. And there are repercussions in the default section that kind of define what happens if they don't do the top off in the Capital Repair Fund.
And that's a really good point. And one of the remedies is, is the money we talked about a minute ago is going to offset operating expenses. It is no longer subject to that. We have the ability to move it over and force it to be used for capital. So if, I'm glad you mentioned that. If they're not, if they're not funding that up each year, we can take that maintenance deposit and help close the gap.
So what is the role of the authority in addressing optional upgrades, changes, budgets?
One slide. Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else? Because I do, I want to get to that question, and that's the next one. Any other questions about, just sort of general funding?
Is it an annual review by the authority or subject to approval annually for funding of the camp, et cetera?
Yeah. Actually, hold that too, because this is all common. These are all, y'all are good. All right. So next slide, oversight. And this is what all these questions are about. And the answer to almost all this is the camp itself because it is the sort of independent, it's the, Tom, sometime referee, I think you got, you know? It's an independent referee saying, you know, here's what you agree, here's what you agree to in the lease. Here's what that requires going forward. And so that's your, that's at the heart of all this. So for operating expenses, it is the camp. It's the condition assessment report that says, not just about capital items, but operating items. What's been done? items, what's been done, what needs to be done, what's short, what's, you know. And so you're getting that every three years. For capital expenses, it's the same thing. It is, it is the camp itself. You get the right to review and object to the budget on an annual basis. But I will say, I just want to be fair here, you know, there's, we want to give you as many approval rights as possible, but the way this lease is set up, it obligates Statco to fund, to fund the projects necessary to keep the building up. We can't in one breath say, we're going to make you do these things, and then go too far withholding approval when they say, we, you know, we have a budget that, that, that is our execution on our, on our lease requirements. You're really relying on the camp. That's, that's what's going on here. But there is, there certainly is an opportunity to provide for objections to that you need to, you know, work through, input on the capital budget, but ultimately, if we're sticking them with the responsibility, they got to have the leeway to, to do the things they're obligated to do. So, your question, Chair, about optional capital improvements, if they are, first of all, this is, now we're on Section 3 of the lease. Anytime they want to do anything that's, I mean, if it's in the camp, they got to do it, you know, you're going to know about that. This is stuff, this is other stuff. So it's not a required repair, not a required capital improvement, but a wish list kind of something or other. You, they got to give you notice of it, they got to, you know, sort of prove its feasibility and all that. But then there are two categories of things where you do get an approval right. If it's a structural improvement and materially deviates from the original stadium plans, not even trying to think of what that might be, something just completely different from the original design, that's something you can get approval over. Non-structural improvements that would increase operating expenses would also be something that you could improve. So that's how the, that's your oversight of optional capital improvements. And once they've gone through that process, those improvements then become eligible for the budget, just like the camp requirements.
Jeff, where are you in the actual lease? I'm sorry.
Section 6.3 is what talks about capital improvements. And really, it's 6.2 is the camp, the mandatory stuff, 6.3 is the optional stuff, 6.4 is where the mandatory and the optional get brought together in the annual budget. And then 6.5 is the, this capital repairs reserve fund, which is the funding mechanism that we talked about. One last thing I'll say we've done, and your executive director and others have been good to, to remind us along the way, you know, we need to make sure that this ward has a funding mechanism in place to engage whatever professional help it needs. I mean, yes, you are getting the project manager from the camp, that, that's good, but if you need somebody from a professional standpoint to give you advice about, are they complying, are they spending the money in the way they said they would in the budget? Are, are they actually doing the things that the camp said they need to do? There is funding of up to $500,000 for you, it, it buried a bit in Section 9.7, and we can talk about it more in a minute. And, and there's no reason, you know, we'll see in a minute, you don't, there's no reason to spend that money unnecessarily, but that capacity is in there for you if you feel like you need engineering assistance, or any other sort of facility consulting assistance to make sure that you're, you're enforcing your rights. So that's oversight. And that's, that's, that's the densest part, I guess in some ways, the densest part of the stadium lease that we've just hit. And, and if y'all got any more questions about it, ask them now, otherwise, we're going to move on to some other stuff.
Hey Jeff, on that, with the term you just used, the available, the extra assistance.
Yes.
Thank you. If, if we didn't use that in your one and two, does that pot of money stay there?
Yeah.
So you've got each year to spend it or not?
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
It's, it's got to be, it's got to be directly related to the building.
You wouldn't typically bid professional services, those, those are subject to a different kind of, of selection process, but it also is competitive. So you, what, what would be typical would be for you to engage somebody on a five-year basis to perform that service through a competitive process, it's like an RFP rather than an ITB.
All right, we done with capital expenses, so now we're, you know I am, we're going to switch over to things that go, we're going to go fast for a couple slides. Articles, now where we've left capital expenses, and this is more sort of, I'm going to call it mundane stuff, but important stuff. Statco is responsible for utilities, waste management, security, shouldn't be any surprise. Frank, you want to talk about, there's sort of a covenant there in Article 8 about non-relocation, and, and that's sort of a teaser for the non-relocation agreement? You just want to, you want to hit on that?
Yeah, that's, basically, the, the lease and the non-relocation agreement kind of work together in, in Article 8, and basically, the lease requires them to stage team gains within the geographical area of the, of the government and in the stadium. That's in accordance to the non-relocation agreement, which we'll get to later. It also talks about maintaining their headquarters and their practice facilities within the geographical area of the metro for 20 years. And then there's some reasons for that, that 20-year limitation, mainly, the, the practice facilities, headquarters are relatively new, the team believes it'll eventually run out of space, and since we couldn't guarantee them additional space through the term of the lease, we kind of made a compromise on, they think they'll be okay for 20 years, and they may have to come back to us and talk about what happens after the end of that 20-year period.
So, yeah, and so that's, and we're going to, we'll get into more detail in a minute, but that is, that's the non-relocation covenant, and very, you know, again, this is Statco, so when you get to the non-relocation agreement, you're going to get that same agreement from the team itself. Yeah.
Madam Chair, you have a question.
There's a question over here.
What would be the reason that they would run out of space?
Well, then, then I can let
Yeah, the, we ought to let the team speak to that.
They got Dan, Chief Operating Officer, Titans. We're, we're kind of landlocked in our current facility. This is, again, this is the practice facility, not the stadium, so just the practice facility. We're out in Metro Center, we're surrounded by a lake and a road, and already pretty tightly packed in there, and so, we're not sure if we're going to run out of space, we don't know the future of what NFL is going to look like, but we've known that in the 20-plus years since we've been here, that we've grown significantly, we just added a huge addition onto the building, so, there's nowhere really, really else on the property that we own that we can expand, so if we do need to expand, we may need to relocate.
But still stay within the county?
No, I mean, that certainly is the hope, but, again, we just want to make sure that we, it's a pretty big plot of land, and so that's a bit of a challenge to find something in the county, especially when you think about the, the rate of growth of Davidson County, but that would certainly be the priority.
Thank you.
So, I, I dump, Article 9 is also an important, an important section of this agreement, and it really sort of falls in two parts. The first, Sections 9.1 through 9.6, generally speaking, assign stadium-related revenues to Statco in the same way that the current lease does. That's what's going on in those sections. In Section 9.7, you get into maybe one of the longest sections of, yeah, it's, it's pretty long. It talks about what happens to, to the revenues here. And when we talk about revenues, you know, we'll just remind ourselves what we're talking about. It's the hotel tax, stadium sales tax, development sales tax, ticket tax, rent, and through 2027, the pilot. Those are the revenues. And then, and then what Section 9.7 says is, well, you know, what, what happens to those? And the first one, no surprise, pay bonds. Yeah, that's, that's what's going on. And you see, if you've got the patience for it, and you read in the middle of that lead-in paragraph, you, you will see the reservation of your right to pull out money for the authority administrative costs, about eight, eight or nine lines down. That is that $500,000 piece, that's where, that's where that is. But otherwise, that big long paragraph is pay bonds. And then annually, if, when you get down to subsections A, B, C, D, and E, those sections say, okay, if there's excess money, what, what happens to it? So that's the, the, the next slide. And so, we've, we've hit on some of these already, but it's just worth repeating, because here they are, a big laundry list. An amount equal to ticket tax and rent goes into the maintenance and repairs fund that we talked about. That is an offset of stadium-related operating expenses. The second, the second bucket is, development sales taxes would go into what's called an eligible projects fund. And that is for, not only, it could be used for, we'll just go through the range of stuff. We talked about last meeting, that money can be used to pay the remaining capital expenses at Nissan Stadium, that was the backstop for that. It can also, we'll see here in a minute, it has the ability to be used for the new stadium capital expenses, but it also, under the statute, can be used for infrastructure necessary to the operation of the stadium. So we'll talk about the site coordination agreement in a minute, sort of three things right off the top of our head that we think about. Parking, you know, is one. Parking is a, is a, is something we are, we, the, the metro and sports authority week are obligated to provide Second Street, which is, I guess, that, yeah, that direction, the, the permanent Second Street. There is funding for that in the site coordination agreement. And then, actually, this direction, right, the park, actually, probably right here, a portion of the park that will, is anticipated to be activated by the team on event days as, as tailgate facilities. Yeah.
Just a reminder, and, and maybe this, you remember this all from the, the previous work session, the development sales tax is outside the building in this 130-acre area that the council will designate, not inside the building, which has a different set of uses that Jeff has covered.
In, in my mind, I sort of think about like, this is probably a terrible analogy, but like a highway, well, these are excess revenues coming down, and there is an off-ramp, ticket tax and rent to this maintenance repairs fund. There's another off-ramp of this 130-acre, the, the sales tax from that area into this eligible projects fund. Everything else is flowing down sort of the main, the main thoroughfare. So that's really hotel occupancy tax, stadium sales tax, and, and where does it, and where does it flow?
So, before we leave that, I don't think it matters, but it would be good for me if you could clarify, the $3 ticket tax, we talked about it not having any inflation attached to it. I'm just curious as to how you get to that number, how you got to it, and for 30 years, how we feel it will impact originally in the initial years, the same way it will 30 years from now?
Yeah, so, so two, two pieces of that. First of all, there is a ticket tax that's been in place since
Right, I'm familiar with
2011, yeah. So that is, but just so we're all talking about the same thing, that is $3, no inflationary growth, it's $3 for all stadium events other than TSU. So that's been in place, and I suppose we could have addressed changing that in some way, shape, or form, but we didn't, that is just always, that's been left on the, on the table. Rent was just a purely a negotiation. And, and the, you know, the amount of rent is an amount equal to
$3.
$3, $3 per patron on, non-NFL events. I'll say, and this, this discussion's been had, and I repeat it, whether, whether they pass that along or not, it, it's owed, you know, and if they charge more for hamburgers, or they just eat it, whatever, it, it's a, and I think that was important, I think the team wanted that flexibility. I don't think they wanted a
$3 is good, I was just curious.
And so, you know, why does it have an inflationary factor? That's not what we negotiate.
Okay.
So now through this major thoroughfare, the broad categories are prepayment of debt, fund the capital reserve, and then a surplus fund. Well, let me, let me back up. Once you, once you've sort of gotten this, these two off-ramps done, the maintenance repairs fund and the eligible projects fund, a third of what's left can be used to fund the prepayment of debt. The next, the next line item then is, you look back to the camp and go, okay, what's the camp require this year? And there's some three-year averaging trying to smooth that out, but, but they're, we don't have to get too down into that. It's really the annual capital repairs, the required capital repairs and improvements in the camp. What's that required to be, be? And if there are, if there are funds at that point available to fund it, it would fund up to that amount. Anything else, then get split 50/50 between that capital repairs reserve fund as sort of a down payment against future budgets. And, and more bond prepayment. That's what's going on. And all those funds that we described are all held by the Department of Finance on your behalf, and all subject to be requisitioned in a way that requires you to be, you sign off, the requisitions come to you, you double check them, you send them over to finance and say these are ready to be paid. So you've got a role to play in that. That's Article 9. All right.
Just to note, while you're going through this approval process, that's something you can use that, that funding source for, is to have somebody help you make sure that this, the money's being spent in accordance with laws.
Sure, thanks.
The few, all right, so, we're now on, and there's some important stuff back here, but this is more boilerplate, if I'm being honest. But there's still some important stuff. Article 10, as, actually, Article 10 has some several, it's very administrative, but it's also very important. It has your, it has your audit right in Section 10.2. It obligates the team to make the national needs payment that you've heard about in Section 10.5. And it generally requires sort of coordination between Statco and you to make sure everybody's providing info, admin, the administrative type information that you're going to need, you know, to help you make sure that stadium sales tax revenues, ticket tax revenues, all these revenue streams are being, are being collected. You need to know that the checks coming to you from the state and metro each year are consistent with the experience of the building. And that's what's going on in, in Article 10. Article 11 has some stuff, so I think it's fairly consistent with the way the current lease reads. You've got, in addition to sort of general access, right, which is no surprise, you got to make sure you know what's going on with your building. You get up to five events a year, authority events. The incremental cost of those events are yours, you know, that's, I think that's consistent with the current lease. 11 points, Section 11.3 acknowledges the TSU sublease that we all know about, which will look, I think, almost exactly like the current arrangement. And then Section 11.4 talks about scheduling in a manner that's very consistent with what's going on in the current lease. NFL games have priority, I don't think that's a surprise. All right, now we're going to start going fast. Article 12, keep it clean from liens and encumbrances. Article 13, Thomas, so proud.
I'm proud of all of it, but particularly proud of the fact that insurance, property insurance for the building itself is a expense the team is going to bear going forward, as opposed to the authority in metro bearing it currently. And obviously, the building is going to be very expensive, and that's a big expense to insure it. So yes, I am proud of that.
I didn't want to steal his thunder. Article 14 has a pretty standard indemnification section where Statco is indemnifying both authority and metropolitan government, you know, the, the universe of those folks. It's a thing you would, likely to see. Article 16, nobody's, any conflict of interest going on here, personnel and non-discrimination requirements in Section 17. You can, Statco's got to comply in all material respects with laws, can't discriminate, and it's, you know, in its pursuit of its obligations under this lease. Article, Article 18, so defaults and remedies, you know, what can you do? And it's, you know, it's a lengthy, it's a lengthy section. Now, I'll try to sum up here. One, one thing that's true is, you know, that you'll see in here, there is a reference to a sort of a termination right, but the fact of the matter is, is while, while you guys have bonds outstanding, termination's just not, termination's never a remedy that anybody wants, it's a last-ditch remedy. While bonds are outstanding, it's just not a remedy at all. And so you, you don't have it, they don't have it, we need them in the building, in the building generating the stadium sales tax is necessary to pay the bonds. And so, a lot of what you see in the remedy section is, while the bonds are outstanding, you've got to work it out, and, and you, and you have the full right to go all the way to court and, and require them to do what the lease obligates them to do. They have the same right, right with you, so they have all sort of legal remedies, but walking away from the lease is not one of them, while, while the bonds are outstanding. Frank made the good point earlier that specifically in this annual Frank made the good point earlier that specifically in this annual, the team's sort of requirement to fund up capital expenses to make sure that budget's fully funded, if they don't do that, there's a specific remedy for that, which primarily is, is we get to hold the maintenance reserve fund and force it to be used for capital expenditures, and take that away as a funding source to them for operating expenses. So you've got a real, you've got some teeth in your ability to, to make them fund on a, on an annual basis. That's what's going on in Article 18. Article's 19 talks about team guarantee, which Frank talked about here in a minute. Article 20, what happens with insurance if you have a casualty event? 21 talks about notices. All this stuff's pretty, pretty boilerplate. Article 25, I'm also gonna, I'm gonna, I wanna talk about that, this is assignment rights to a successful owner. Let me talk about that all in terms of the guarantee and the non-relocation. All I'll say is, the assignment provisions are consistent throughout. All for one, one for all. If you assign the lease, you're assigning the guarantee, you're assigning the non-relocation and vice versa. And so, the assignment provisions all read the same way. Miscellaneous, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna wear you out with that. So, with that, we transitioned to the next two agreements that feel, fit really neatly with the stadium lease, and that's the non-relocation and the guarantee. The guarantee is team co's commitment to backstop the obligations of Statco under the stadium lease. And we talked about it before, it's also their commitment to backstop the obligations of Statco under the development. So, and I'm, I'm just gonna take this, occasion to echo what Tom said. These folks have been super helpful, they're just knowing what's market, knowing what's, you know, what you can ask for, what you can't ask for, has been great. And so, I'm, they could do a whole lot of this talking, and, but I'm, I'm gonna let them hear on the guarantee and the non-relocation agreement.
It's actually a pretty simple agreement, and the primary reason you'd need a team guarantee, or, or guarantee for someone with assets, because Statco is a relatively new company with no assets. Now, over the term of the lease, they'll certainly develop those things, but at the beginning, Statco's a brand-new company, so you, you want the team or sub step in and guarantee all their obligations, so that's what the team is doing in the guarantee. The guarantee also requires that if the team is ever sold, and basically, you have approval rights on assignment unless it's approved by the NFL. The NFL approves a new owner, you accept that, but that new owner has to assume all the obligations of Statco as well. So that, this guarantee follows the current team and also any new potential ownership down the road. And that's pretty much what it says, very simple document, but it, it's something that's really important to cover you in the event that Statco is unable to perform for whatever reason.
Any questions about that? So, non-relocation agreement?
The, the non-relocation agreement
I'm sorry, Frank, hold on, before we get to that. So now we're at, we're at exhibit I in your book. Tab I.
And, and Dennis may want to expand on some of these things, too, but I, I'll try to keep it simple, because it is also a fairly simple agreement. What the non-relocation agreement does is require the team, the, the Titans to stay in town during the term of the lease, and also play all their games in the stadium. You certainly don't want to spend the public capital that you're spending, and the team is able to move, or pick and choose games they want to play somewhere else during the term, that they make more money or something like that. So, this agreement requires them to maintain the franchise here, play all their games here with certain exceptions, meaning like the international game they play in London or Germany or something like that. Or in the event there's a force majeure, which happened this year with the Buffalo Cincinnati incident, where it was the potential for playoff games that might be played somewhere else because of that kind of force majeure incident. Other than that, they have to play their games here. In the event that something happens and they do try to move, or sell the team to someone that wants to move it, you have certain uprisings under this agreement to force them to stay. And the primary thing you want to do is have specific performance. So you have the right to go to board and demand that they stay here and fulfill their obligations throughout the term of the lease. If they don't, you have the ability to collect certain liquidated damages, which are designed to be quite onerous, to make them think twice about moving. And they basically are set up to, you recoup all the public investment in the transaction if they try to move. So for the first 15 years or so, it's the full amount, the, the total authority contribution, the state contribution, the money you've put in to these various funds to maintain, help them maintain the building. You also get to collect a certain amount of money to tear down the stadium if that's what you want to do, if they leave before the end of the term and, and redevelop the whole site. Now, that starts as an NFL requirement, it starts to work its way down to zero during the term, but we've, the team has agreed to keep those numbers whole for at least the first half of the term, and then they go down in incremental amounts, 5%, 6%, depending on which category, until you get to the end. And, and I think for the most part, we were okay with that, because by the time you get to the end of the lease, everybody's probably gotten the benefit of their bargain, and if the team wants to leave after year 30, that's just their right at the end of the term. So we, we think the, the liquidated damage provision is important, but the main thing this deal does is allow you to go suit for specific performance. What you want is for them to stay here, keep the stadium open, keep the revenues flowing, so you can pay back your debt, things like that. So that's, I think in a nutshell, what the non-relocation agreement does. Dennis, did I?
Yeah.
Any, any questions regarding the non-relocation agreement?
Jeff, we do anticipate that we'll take a break, and we're probably gonna lose some of our members' quorum, so I'd like to, if it's okay, pause here and maybe go back and approve the minutes, and then take maybe a 10-minute break, and I think we'll get out of here early anyway. So, on Friday, you should have received a copy of the minutes from our March 8th work session. Are there, are there any additions or corrections?
Madam Chair, I think there's a typo on page 2, that could be the word delayed. And, subject to that revision, I would make a motion for approval.
Mark, no.
Okay, second. It's been moved improperly seconded. Any additional discussion?
Well, I, I wanted to make a comment on Monica's question with reference to Architect of Record, and I've forgotten where that, oh, here it says Metro procurement's competitive. The Architect of Record firm will be responsible for the design and will most likely engage on, engage other subconsultants. Now, the Architect of Record does not necessarily have to be the designer. The Architect of Record would be the, the, the firm that would seal and sign the construction documents, and would be responsible for that.
That's correct.
Look, I just wanted to, yeah, because it wasn't explained like that, and I just think it's corrected for Monica's benefit. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Any other corrections? If not, there's a motion and a second. All of those in favor of accepting the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. The motion passes. Given time to get back.
We're gonna, Frank was on a roll, and so we're gonna let, let him keep at it. We're going to the intellectual property agreement, which I think is Tab K in your book. I think it's referred to as the license agreement, same thing.
This, this is a fairly simple agreement as well, relatively quickly. Basically, this agreement is designed for the authority and the Titans to share their intellectual property. You own all the images of the stadium, the campus, those are your intellectual property. The team owns all of its marks, including its emblem, NFL shield, and things like that. So this agreement allows you all to share those images. So they'll want to use images of the stadium, you'll want to use images of the stadium that include their marks, Titans, whoever their sponsors are, or whatever. So this agreement kind of allows you to do that. It also grants Statco certain other rights, advertising, promotional sponsorship, the broadcasting, telecommunications rights, and certain domain rights, so they can use whatever stadium.com in their agreements, and in their websites and things like that. The other thing the agreement does is require each party to adhere to certain quality control rights. They don't want you defacing their marks, you don't want them enhancing or degrading images of the stadium, things like that. So the, the agreement makes you adhere to certain quality control standards as well. And that's pretty much it.
Any questions about that? We're gonna transition to campus development, if y'all done have questions. All right, so I'm on slide 29, if you have the slides in front of you. And so it's just, just talk for a minute, just sort of reorient ourselves about what the goal of, of, of all this is. And now we're talking about the land. The goal is to facilitate the development of the campus surrounding this new stadium. And the idea has been all along that Metro would lead the charge on that redevelopment area, effort through the, through the engagement of developers through long-term ground leases and development agreements to develop the campus. And so, that's the goal. And so, you know, when the dust settles, your job, and it's really important one, is oversee the development and operation of this new, gone, busy place. Metro's responsibility is to oversee the development of the campus. So that's the, that's the, how it gets divvied up. And so with those goals in mind, there are a series of land, land transfers that are described, let me just, I'm gonna take the time here, man, just stop. And where, where do all these things show up? We'll, we'll reference them in here, but anywhere from the existing lease agreement, there's an amendment to the site, there's some land stuff going on there, there's an option agreement where you are giving Metro the option to purchase the existing site once the existing lease is done. There's the ground lease for this, for the new stadium site, and there's the site coordination agreement. Those are all agreements that are in your book, that are, that are all part of this land transfer and development management concept. And so, let's just go through these things, sort of 1, 2, 3, 4. The way it is now is, you own the entire campus, this, this board owns the entire campus, and the entire campus is encumbered by the current lease, you know, stadium and parking lots. And so, step one is, is you would convey the entire campus to Metro, except for the site of the existing lease. And the site of the existing lease, and we talked about this, I think, last time, is gonna shrink to the build, the four, the four streets surrounding this building. That'll be the, that'll be the new site. So the existing lease will be amended, we talked about this, you know, what's the next three years gonna look like? That new site shrinks, the balance you're conveying out to Metro. Then Metro would ground lease the site of the new stadium back to you. So that's what the ground lease does, and that ought to look to you just like GO's part. You know, no spare grounds property, you didn't own it, you ground lease it from them, you then in turn lease it to Nashville SC, exact same thing going on here. Didn't really alter your responsibilities, in fact, doesn't alter them at all. You are the landlord under this deal, just like you'd be if you owned the land. Talked about the option then. Okay, so once all that's done, then Metro's got it, owns everything but this site, and when this building, when this lease is over and this building's torn down, this is gonna be part of the development process, too. So you would give Metro an option to purchase this site when this lease is over, that's step three. And then four is, they actually exercise on that option in, let's say, 2027. So when the dust settles, sort of, you know, sort of go back to the goals. When the dust settles, you know, you can sort of see on that slide, the stadium footprint, you're in, you're in control of that as the ground lessy from Metro and as lesser to Statco. And then Metro's got ownership of all the, all the other property, including the site, the current stadium site that we're sitting on now, that's sort of, you can see marked there. And so, you know, the, you know, the goal is then for all of that to be developed. So that's what's going on with the land transfers. Any, any questions about that? The site coordination agreement, we'll, we'll then address, okay, now that we've land that way, who's gonna do what with it now?
Let me, let me understand this correctly.
Sure.
The new site, the new stadium site is already owned by the Titans, is that?
No, you, you own it, it's part of the parking lots that you own, and that's subject to the current lease.
But this site will still be owned by the Titans, and then we'll have an option of purchasing it.
So you own this site, too. You, you own it all. The Titans have a lease, right now, the Titans have a leasehold interest in everything. When this deal gets, if you approve it, if the council approves it, and we do this deal, then at closing, we would amend that lease to shrink it down, and so the team would only have a leasehold interest in the building and the immediate surrounding parking lots. That's all the team would have, a leasehold interest, not ownership. Yeah. And so then, and then when, when this building gets torn down and they move into the new one, their leasehold interest in this space goes away. And so then, you own it, but you will have agreed with Metro that Metro can buy. And so then when the dust settles, the team will have a leasehold interest there, and, and then nothing anywhere else.
Okay.
What's the timeline for those steps?
And this is, you asked a couple of times at the last meeting, really good question. So, there will be a, a closing, and the closing will have everything. The bonds will be issued, you'll, you'll do all this, all this stuff, all at once.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have a question with reference to the acreage. And I can't find where it is in the binder, but it's, 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 there's a reference to 20.78 acre portion, out of a total of 130 acres.
Right.
But then it also says that the stadium site will be approximately 32 acres. What's it? I'm trying to understand the difference between the 20.78 acre portion and, and then the 32.
So there are some, there, and I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking at Tom here, there's some numbers that get thrown around here, I'm just gonna run through them as I understand them. How big is the entire campus? I think what you own is roughly 95 acres, right? The new, the new stadium site is, is the 20.7 acres you mentioned, and that's the building itself, and then 100-foot NFL mandated security buffer around it. That 20.7 acres is the building and that buffer. I don't know where 32 comes from, but I'll, what I'll bet it's referring to is, what we refer to sometimes as the village, which is parking lots, basically A, B, C, and D, I think, over here, and it's the new stadium site, and the North Village and the South Village. The entirety of that is about 35 acres. And so the stadium, 20.7, sits right in the middle of it, and the balance is to the North and South.
The one other number, and it happened to be, in what you said is the 130, that's just the, the area designated by the council under a state statute for the sales tax capture. And it's not really related, part of it will capture And it's not really related, part of it will capture part of what gets developed on the, on the existing stadium campus, but it's gonna reach up to the north too. So 130 acres is something sort of different.
Thank you.
And, and you know, on one hand, I mean, this, I think, is pretty straightforward goal, pretty straightforward approach, but there's a lot going on here, so I'm glad y'all are asking questions. And, and if you've got more, ask them. Because once you, once you sort of fully grasp what's going on with the land, the rest, some of the rest of this stuff, all these agreements then that relate to it make perfect sense. So just a little, you know, a little bit of history and sort of where we're going, how this would work from the Metro perspective, developing in the campus. In, in December of '22, the council approved the solicitation of developers for phase one. I don't think phase one is right. An, an initial development area, I think. Get in trouble even terms. But, um, and, and so that, you know, is sort of on the southern, primarily on the southern boundary of the property. That is underway. If everything were to go forward, both with this, this deal, everything would be approved on this deal. And then coupled with the, the results of that RFP, council would approve, it'd be brought back to them to approve long-term ground leases and development agreements to empower a developer to develop those properties. And, and then, so, you know, if you think about it, that's really sort of getting to the stuff that's not either part of the new stadium construction site or this, or this property. You know, this property, as long as it sits here, really, you know, precludes you from developing sort of the, the, maybe the core of the campus. But when this stadium's torn down then, the anticipation is that Metro would pursue a similar process for identifying developers for the balance. That's the land plan. So, you know, we sort of hit on this, but just sort of go through it again. The legal documents that accomplish moving all the land around are a quitclaim deed from you to the, you to the Metro, it gets everything but this site to them, a ground lease back like Geotis for the new stadium site, an option agreement that empowers Metro to then take control of this site once this building's down. And those documents are all in your, I don't think the quitclaim deed is, quitclaim deed is pretty simple little, authorized, I think, in the resolution cell. Site coordination agreement, and I'm gonna lean hard on, on Dennis here. One of, you know, Dennis has got a lot of special, specialties, but one is, is complicated real estate developments around sports facilities. And so several reasons he's, he's here with us today. But so from the, now we're talking about the site coordination agreement, and then your book, that is Tab H. So you have a purpose to that, you know, so what's going on with this? And it's, really is coordinating the development and operation of the new stadium with the development and operation of the campus as a whole. They've got to, they've got to, I've heard people say they gotta speak to each other, they gotta interact with each other. You gotta be able to make your way, you know, to and from the stadium. And the, and the major topics that are part of this agreement are, and some of these, you know, hopefully are no surprise, you know, coordinate construction. How is parking and this other stadium-related infrastructure and public improvements gonna be handled? We talked about that, you know, we're going from a lease where the entire campus is encumbered, and you, as part of that lease, are required to provide them parking, to a lease where you've just got the building itself. And now Metro, as the owner, is going to make certain parking commitments consistent with what we saw in the term sheet back last fall. That's all in here. And then there are gonna be covenants and restrictions for campus and stadium operation and cooperation, much of which Dennis can sort of talk about in a minute. We've sort of phrased this, as you read through it, it feels very much like an agreement to agree. And, and it is, and it's because some of that coordination is just, once we have a developer on board, we'll be in a much better position to, you know, figure out exactly how the rules of the road work. So, let's talk, so, right, all right. You know, roles and responsibilities, and one of your questions, I think, is like, what role do we have under the site coordination agreement if we are just merely the landlord of, of this building? And the answer is, is as long as your interest is just the landlord of this building, there are not a lot of obligations for you in this agreement. You're not in charge of campus development. You're not, you know, and then because you are not, and you don't have any ownership or leasehold interest in campus property, you wouldn't be on the hook for anything. It's entirely possible that you and Metro might in the future agree that this board, I'm just making things up, but it's not completely far-fetched. Metro says, you know what, we do want this board to, to have a leasehold interest, let's say, and an operating responsibility for the stadium parking. You know, that, that may make sense, may make sense. And so as, if you were to come back into responsibility like that, then, you know, you will have responsibilities here. But primarily, it is Metro, as the owner of the campus property, the developers who have, campus developers who have rights to the campus property by way of ground leases and development agreements with Metro. That's the real sort of public responsibility side. And then Statco has its set of responsibilities. Does that all make general sense? So that, that's just big picture, what's going on. When we get into the nuts and bolts of it, some of this, I hope, like Article 5, I hope is pretty obvious. You know, Article, Section 5.1 says Metro may engage developers to develop the campus properties, that's the plan. And then Sections 5.2 through 5.9, you know, say some pretty basic things about, you know, let's just, I'll give, give an example, you know, while the stadium's being constructed, we don't need campus construction blocking the way so that the, you know, Statco can't get a crane in to get the stadium built, you know? So it's, it's mechanical coordination stuff like that that's in Sections 5.2, 5.9.
There were a couple of questions last time about the environmental responsibility, which is at the bottom of that slide. Will not land on this word store.
So Article 5 really is construction coordination. Article 6 deals almost entirely with sort of the campus infrastructure and public facilities that are in some way, way, shape, or form involved in this project. And, and the first one, sorry, the first one's parking. And this all, I hope this all, I hope this all looks pretty familiar because it's, for the most part, straight out of the term sheet. Like the term sheet talked about, Metro and the authority providing parking in the North Village, that's actually sort of slightly different and better, I think, maybe than where the term sheet was. The North Village will be team parking, sort of as a just conceptual matter, will be, you know, 24/7 team parking in the same way that the parking lots immediately surrounding this building are. Panically, how that's gonna work is they will include surface parking. North Village will be surface parking as part of the stadium budget. That's how it'll start out. And however many spaces then that are, that are in the North Village will be how many spaces there are. And then what Article 6 says is, to the extent Metro develops the North Village and cannibalizes those spaces, they've got to be replaced on a temporary basis during construction and on a permanent basis as part of the development or in some other way. That's what's going on in the North Village. Campus-wide, and this is again from the term sheet, Metro is required to ensure that at all times there are at least 2,000 parking spaces somewhere in the campus available for the team for event days in the same way that parking is available for the team for event days now. And so, you know, and again, that's sort of like big picture. I think we're at 7,500 parking spaces now. You know, this is a, you know, a significantly reduced requirement. For some context, once, once, if you don't count the parking spaces immediately surrounding this building, and you treat everything over there as being a construction site and no longer parking spaces, you're still left with about 3,000 on the points. So just to do the math then, once campus development cannibalizes 1,000 of those parking spaces, this requirement to start backfilling parking would kick in. But again, that's, that's real, you know, you, parking is sort of off your play unless the powers that be, including y'all, decide that you don't need to get back into the, you know, you and Metro decided you don't need to be in the management business of it. But at the moment, it's off your plate, but that's what's going on in, in Article 6. Any questions about parking? Second street is described also in Article 6. There will be two, chronologically, there'll be two second streets. There'll be one, a temporary second street, it's while the, while the project's underway. That will all be part of the stadium project budget. Once this stadium is torn down, I think I'm, I'm right to say, there will be a permanent second street constructed. And the, and the, sort of the nature of the discussion was, is that, that asset felt like it belonged as much. It, it's sort of, there needed to be some sharing of that. So a 50/50 sharing of that is, is contemplated. Like we talked about that a little last time, that funding would be provided through that eligible projects fund that we talked about, the off-ramp for the development sales center. And then last, there is, there is not a, not a, in, in section, let me make sure I get the section right. In Section 6.7, Met, Metro agrees to put forth a proposal to get a campus park built, and that's when, that's when this building is torn down because it's gonna sit, run right through the middle of, of this building. And when that balance of the campus is being developed, that an area consistent with what's in the East Bank Vision Plan would be held back as a park. And so that's what you see in Section 6.7. And Dennis, you okay if I turn the balances over to you?
So what's, what's really unique about this project is the opportunity that, that Metro Nashville has for redeveloping the area around the stadium, which is part of the vision plan that Jeff just referred to. And, and the, the reason that the site coordination agreement still has a lot of provisions that are yet to be developed and agreed to with the team is because the master developer for that project is not yet being selected by Metro through their RFI and RFP process. That's, that's an ongoing process. So if you kind of step back for a second and you look at what you all are doing in terms of authorizing the team and Statco to develop a new stadium at their risk, at their cost, except for the public contribution that's being made and for operating it within those boundaries, the team still needs to know that there are activities that are gonna occur on the rest of the, of the property that you currently own and that will ultimately be owned by Metro and developed by a developer. But they'll need to know that there is coordination between what happens outside the stadium and what they activate on event days, game days, or other things, other events they bring to the stadium. So the, so the team's really interested in knowing how all that's gonna work, how they're gonna not just have the parking, as, as Jeff has mentioned, that, that they can activate those areas for tailgating and for other activities to promote the events and really maximize the use of, of the surrounding campus. On the other hand, from the city's perspective, from Metro's perspective, it's really important to know that we can maximize that opportunity for private developers to also maximize those opportunities. So the site coordination agreement starts to address all the kinds of provisions that will need to be thought through, either when the developer's developing outside of the stadium or when the team is activating on its event days. And remember that event days are not just game days for the team. There are other events that the, that the, that Statco brings to the stadium, and they also include other citywide events that are attracted to come to Nashville because of the new world-class, state-of-the-art stadium that's gonna be there in place of the current stadium with a robust development around the stadium developed by one or more developers. So that's, that's the vision and concept that, that Metro and you all and the authority are really jointly working on. So to do that, there will be a series of covenants, conditions, and restrictions that Statco and the authority will need to work through. And those are outlined topically in the, in this stadium, in the site coordination agreement. It will deal with rights to stadium access. It will deal with activation of a plaza. I think you all know that there's a plaza that is expected to be developed, and that's still being determined how that's gonna work outside of the stadium, sort of between the stadium and the South Village. South Village being, at least for now philosophically, intended to be a kind of mixed-use development that will provide dining, restaurant, entertainment, residential, other mixed-use development opportunities outside of the stadium. But the plaza sort of sits in between those two developments. And so how that will exactly work is still being both engineered as well as determined how that's gonna work operationally between, between Statco and Metro in anticipation of a developer coming in. And, and then Statco, as the operator of the stadium, as I've said, will also have the right to activate the campus on event days. And that requires a whole lot of different things when we talk about team activation on the, on the team side, and also requires a lot of things on the Metro side that will be imposed on the development. So you'll see there in these bullet points, there's a coordination of marketing and advertising rights. You know, the team wants to understandably maximize its opportunities since it, it has the economic risk of operating the stadium and maximizing that asset for itself. It wants to maximize marketing and advertising rights. But at the same time, we don't want those rights to impinge on a developer's ability to maximize their marketing and advertising rights as long as they don't, for example, impinge or intrude on the rights of the team. So, so you'll see in this site coordination agreement, a number of different protections. Parking is one of them. There are, Statco has granted certain rights that Jeff has mentioned on operate, during operational periods. There's an allocation of cost for operating that parking in, in which the team is responsible for, for running the, the parking operations during their event days and even being responsible for repairs. But on non-event days, that would be the obligation of the developer or of Metro. We've also addressed in this agreement the fact that there's gonna be a need to coordinate concession rights. Again, concession rights are important to the team. They need the ability to maximize those concession rights. But there will be concession rights that will need to be utilized by the developer of either the South Village or even on the, on the park that's part of the of either the South Village or even on the, on the park that's part of the campus. And then sponsorships too. How does, you know, how will sponsorship works between the team's regular sponsors and other sponsors who come in and, and associate themselves with that developer? And then you'll see there on this list, protection against ambush marketing. Ambush marketing is identified because, again, the team wants to be sure that no one's coming on to the, on to the campus and undercutting the team's obligations to maximize their marketing opportunities. There will be, as part of this, a pretty robust set of covenants and restrictions that go with, that will be filed against the property. And we'll work on those covenants and restrictions between Metro, the developer, and the team, Statco, to make sure that there are reasonable protections, reasonable use restrictions, and reasonable reciprocal rights between the developer on the one hand and Statco on the other. So, as Jeff mentioned, the site coordination agreement is still an agreement to agree because the key gating item here is the master developer, what their expectations will be, and how Metro and you all can maximize that opportunity for the people of Nashville.
And for what it's worth, that subsequent agreement would be just like the site coordination agreement. It would take Metro Council approval, the approval of this board, and the approval of Statco.
That was a great explanation. I, I would like to maybe learn about bullet point number three, maybe an example of how that might occur, what that would look like.
Are you talking about advertising and concession rights?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to let.
Playing the plaza and park during stadium events.
I'll give a couple of examples. So, in the South Village itself, if you kind of imagine it as a developed, again, robust, mixed-use development, there will be restaurants there in, in that, in that development. Those restaurants are entitled to, you know, they may be national, they may be local, whatever, you know, the master developer comes up with. Those are technically concession rights that are being granted in the, in the South Village. On the other hand, from the team's perspective, the team has a master concessionaire for the stadium. And, and they'll probably grant, it's up to Statco to figure out how to do this, but they'll probably grant on their event days that those concession rights also to areas they activate outside the stadium. So how you kind of coordinate those two and make sure there's no infringement of one, one group's rights over another group's rights is kind of a very technical, complex kind of negotiation that still has to be worked out. And for example, we use this as an example in the negotiations, if there is a, if there's a park area outside of the South Village on the campus, it's kind of likely that that park area might have some kind of permanent year-round concession area, you know, cafe or something like that for people to go to. So in that case, you know, Metro and the developer of that will want to have a protected right to use and operate, not have to close that cafe, in my example, during event days. So there are just kind of a lot of details like that that have to get worked out as the development vision evolves for the whole campus.
Good, thank you.
Kathy, I have one question.
Yes.
Just to clarify, excuse me, you've referenced South Village a number of times, and I'm looking at Exhibit G of the agreement. Is that also referred to here as Central Waterfront? Are we talking about the same location?
I think Central Waterfront is an East Bank Vision Plan term that is the whole, the whole area.
So what would be specifically the, the southern portion you're referring to?
It would be, if you think about it, it'd be on the, I'm going to try to get this right. It'd be bounded on the north by the new stadium. It'd be bounded on south by Shelby. It'd be bounded on the west by Second Street and bounded on the west east, I'm sorry, by Interstate Drive. If you look at Exhibit E, the site development agreement?
Yeah.
Parcel C.
Parcel C would be the South Village.
That's the South Village, yep. And B is the North Village.
Thank you. That's all.
Any other questions?
So, maybe, maybe we do the, sort of walk maybe back through sort of where, where we've been, where we just went, where we're going. On the A, we hit the development agreement and the amendment to the existing lease. What does the life look like in the next three years? Today, we hit really the stadium itself, the non-relocation, the guarantee to be fit sort of neatly with that. And then we talked about the campus documents. With your permission then, on March 28th, so next Tuesday, we would come back to you with the balance of the documents. And the way we've sort of organized this, those documents, well, we come back to two things. One is presentation of the financing plan. So what is, what do, what do, what do the revenues and expenses look like? And coupled with that would be the documents that relate to that. And it's, there are like two provisions of the development agreement that we glossed over a little bit because they talk about how, you know, the bonds. The state funding agreement, which is pretty straightforward and is pretty much, here's our $500 million. The intergovernmental agreement and the PSL agreement, which by the way, we expect, I think Frank just, I think, signed off on that. We should have that maybe tomorrow or the next day. And we'll, and we'll get it to you. That would be on the 28th. And then I think, I'm right, I'm looking to Director Flannery over there that April 4th, then the idea is that this package would then be brought to this board for a vote. That's, as I understand the schedule. And we can certainly, if you've got additional questions about this stuff last week or whatever else you want to ask, you know, we're here, particularly these two guys, while you got them, feel free to ask. But otherwise, look for us again in eight days.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, yes. I would like to go back to last week. Under, on page, what is it? 19. Minority contractor participation. It, it references.
I'm sorry, Melvin. What pages are you on?
Page 19. I'm under, I'm under the.
Development Agreement, Section 7.8C. Page 19, that's it.
Okay.
There's a reference to minority contractor participation, but there's no reference in here, that's on the construction. But there's no reference to minority participation during the design process. Is that, is that something that will be part of the RFP?
It will be. They have to comply with what would be Metro's rules if Metro were undertaking this project rather than the team. They have to comply with Metro's rules and regulations. It may not say this in, in so many words in this paragraph, but they're, they've agreed to comply with our rules, which would require the same Business Assistance Office involvement as the, as the construction does.
Will we be allowed to see the RFP?
It'll be a public document, yes.
Public document, and we'll know when it goes out.
Yeah, it's, again, this is the team, this is the team doing it, but they, it'll, it'll be public.
Okay. And also, under Exhibit B, procurement process, there's a reference to, it's under professional services contract. That, that, on page, this, I'm still under, I'm still under the development and funding agreement. Exhibit B. There is a reference to the evaluation being based only on the evaluation factors set forth in the RFP. And then it says numerical rating systems may be used but are not required. I have a particular interest in numerical rating systems that, properly done, may, may prohibit arbitrarily, arbitrary numbers in the scoring process. So you might have a, any evaluation factor that could be, the maximum points could be five. And there's no way to say, to break that up in any way. Someone might say, well, I say that's a two. Just arbitrarily say it's a two rather than giving it a maximum number or a minimum number. I don't know if that makes sense, but would you guys have anything to do with that?
We would have something to do with, with reviewing their proposed evaluation criteria. And I'm not completely following, following your question. I do, I am familiar with, typically, there would be five or six different categories for the evaluation, you know, the management team and project approach, experience on other projects, commitment to things like minority participation, and you would get a certain number of points assigned to each one. And some of them are objective and some of them are subjective. And I, and I gather you're concerned about the ones that might be subjective.
Correct.
Okay, could you, if you could elaborate, I'll take a shot at it.
Well, well, I, I just, I'm just interested in, in the fact that individuals on the evaluation team could see that, that factor from their own finish point of perspective. And, which might, which might not. Let me think about it and I'll talk to you about it.
And you're, you're welcome to just call me if you want. I mean, it'd be great for everybody to hear the, the exchange, but if you want to talk it through, I'm easy to buy.
Well, I'll, I'll do that. I'll do that.
And we can always make time on 28th.
Right.
Okay, maybe, and I'll come back, right. Sounds good. I believe that's it. I believe that's it, for me.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions? If, yes.
I have a comment, and I, I think I communicated this to the board on Friday in the email that went out, but I'll just say it more broadly. The, the meeting next Tuesday is really more in line with a typical meeting. It is not just a work session. There, there's some other things, some other business the board needs to take up. So I wanted to definitely articulate that. Finance Committee will need to meet briefly at 9:30. And, and there's some action that we need to take with regards to First Horizon Park. But we will leave a lot of time because there's still a lot of things that we need to get through.
Great. So as Monica says, we will convene again on Tuesday, the 28th, at First Horizon Park. And so this concludes our second work session. I'd like to thank the staff and Metro Legal and Metro Finance. You have been invaluable to us to help us get a grasp of what's going on with the documents. We appreciate that. Our guests, you have been wonderful. Your approach to layman's understanding has been really helpful. It helps us to get our arms around it. And so I think that this has been a really great session this morning. And so, as always, Jeff, thank you for a job well done. We appreciate you. This is a lot of information. We appreciate your time and your diligence. So please do everything in your power to attend the upcoming meeting. It's very important. As we move closer to our vote, which will take place on April 4th. Also, don't forget that the administration and the Titans have offered one-on-one sessions. We certainly appreciate those. Melvin, you might want to take advantage of those too before you get to us. But we're happy to hear the dialogue. If there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Consider this meeting adjourned. Thank you.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.